Push that to.
That's what I mean.
It's coming out with it.
Okay.
Right, we're set.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Um, welcome to a very unusual annual general meeting of the town council in that there's four members, thank you very much indeed, and the public and a few people watching, probably no doubt. Um, clearly we'd much rather do this in front of a bigger group of residents, but the current stage Covid roadmap precludes larger in which greetings. And we thought the weather wouldn't necessarily support an outdoor meeting, though clearly it does. Uh, during a full online meeting would have been an idea despite the technical problems we've just had, but the recent changes in legislation are made as well to preclude that too, so we have an unusual hybrid. We intend to hold an extraordinary town meeting later in the year when we are more able, and I'll of course keep you, the residents of Andal in form. First things first, as of last week, we have five new council with five councillors from last time and five new councillors, some experienced, some fresh to the role. It's important that the council represents Andal as a community, and the closer we get to the demographic profile of Andal, the better. I'm going to ask each of them to spend a short time on camera now to introduce themselves, if only so that you know who we are as you go around town. A couple of us live in what might be called North Andal, a couple in East and a couple in West, so if you see us around, do stay high. All our contact details are available on the OTC website. Do look there for any council information you want or need and make contact if you come and find what you want. Whilst I'm here, uh, I'm Ian Clark, I've been on the council two or three years, I think now. I've been at mayor a whole week and I forgot to put my chains on, even though I've been carrying them around all day. Uh, I've been resident thirty years in the town, I work at Andal School and I'm slightly eco-minded. Um, in alphabetical order, but in terms of deputy mayor as well, can I ask the councillors to come up and say a few words up here? David Chappell, you're next.
Right, okay. Well, I wasn't anticipating that, but never mind. Um, but I'm David Chappell, I've been elected as deputy mayor for what I think is now the third year in succession, which I'm not sure what it tells us about to me or about Andal Town Council, but I'm actually the longest-serving councillor, having been here since nineteen eighty-six, and that's thirty-five years of the council. Um, and forty years in Andal, or thereabouts, because recently I've moved to Blackthorn, about another half outside, uh, the parish boundary, if that. Um, but it's been a pleasure to serve in the council for this role and I'm looking forward to the next four years.
Thank you very much. Um, councillor Cheshire, Alan Cheshire.
Cheshire, yeah.
Sorry, Cheshire.
I just, I need the box, sorry. Um, I've been on the council nearly as long as councillor Chappell, probably a couple of years less. Um, I've got a good record for attending meetings and I've got a particular interest and always have had in youth matters and, and also the elderly. So I'm a trustee of CHAT, which is the youth counselling service. I'm a trustee of Volunteer Action, which is the, a service that deals with the elderly mostly. And I've been very successful, I'm glad to say, in securing a few buildings on behalf of various groups in Andal and establishing a step up.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Paul Davis.
Uh, good evening, my name's Paul Davis, I'm a resident of Andal, I've lived in the town eleven years, I'm one of the wested, so the west side of the town. Um, I've got a wife, Alex, and three boys, twelve, uh, nine and, uh, ten. Uh, we're members of a number of clubs in town, I'm a member of the rugby club, I'm vice-trade minors and juniors. And I'm active also with the cricket club, uh, so you can see that my life is spent around youth and the like, I like to think that we're going to try and force some issues with the youth. Uh, I also work around the school and I work for school in Piesford. So that's me and I aim to be very active on town and on its behalf. I previously was a councillor, I left a few years ago, but I've returned.
Thank you very much indeed. Uh, David Fuller, who's been on the council for, I think, one or two terms, sends his apologies. He's a long-term resident and a longstanding councillor. His IT flair is always welcome and he's a floodbord and a police liaison representative, I think is his title. Uh, councillor Liz Holm, you're next.
Hello, everyone. Uh, I'm much newer to Andal than most of the other councillors, it seems. I have, I've been here less than three years, but I have been in the area since two thousand and six, living out in Wood Newton. So my children have been through the school system here and I've always been involved in the communities that, uh, we've lived in. So I've been with the PFA, I've been with the governors, uh, and I'm currently, um, manager at Volunteer Action, the councillor chair as already mentioned. Um, and I've been involved with, uh, local councils for a long time. Uh, in fact, all the time I've lived in Northamptonshire, I've been a parish clerk and I do still have one, one clerk position. But, uh, I'm very happy to be moving over to be a councillor at Andal and really look forward to what we can achieve.
Thank you very much. Um. Gerry Hutton is also unable to be here today, he's, uh, been mayor in the past, it's crucial to our financial procedures and successes, um, and also he's a, he's a colleague working with transition Andal. Um, so councillor Luke Jones, fresh to the council?
Yes, hello everyone, I, I am brand new, um, my name's Luke Jones. Um, I moved to Andal just about two, two years ago. Um, I live in the, the south of the town, uh, near the Co-op. Um, I have, uh, my wife Kate and, and three young children, um, two of which who are at Andal Primary School, um, and my mother with a child minder, uh, just out beyond Polebrook. Um, I've been a teacher for, for nearly a decade now, um, and I teach theology and philosophy at Andal School. Uh, and I'm also a reservist in the, um, in Royal Navy, um, with the CCA. Uh, I, I, I come as a, as a member of the Green Party as, as well to the council and with the, the territory, um, on that as I, I, I care deeply about creating and preserving, um, green spaces in the area and also wish to help people remain mindful really of the, the climate emergency, uh, which we're facing. Um, but also I aim to, um, to improve access to a range of amenities, particularly for, for young families, um, in the surrounding area.
Thank you very much indeed. Paul King was hoping to be here, but he's been put on call today, so apologies from him as well. He's a previous councillor and I think mayor as well, so it's great to have some fresh experience back. And councillor Reichhold, who was meant to be joining us on Zoom, which due to our technical problems is probably sitting frustrated in his kitchen. Um, so he's a very experienced councillor with East Northants, of course, in the past as well. This is also an important chance to publicly thank all those from the old council who've taken a break, Malcolm Glenn, Clyde Humphreys, Peter Peel, Tony Robinson and Roy Sparks, who've all worked tirelessly in the last few years over a number of really challenging initiatives, um, and have all put in what the Australians call some hard yards. And I was going to welcome our new unitary authority councillor, Helen Harrison, she's hanging on Zoom as well, so unfortunately there we are. That's my next slide, my crispy moment. Um. Also to introduce, for those of you who can see it in the room and those who can't see it on the video, uh, the Andal Town Council staff, um, including Emma Clark, who's masterminding the technology here today.
Not very loud.
Well, most of them, you know, just now. Um, can we have the next slide? So, the first thing we need to consider tonight is the end of year finances. Uh, things on the screen are all from the annual internal audit report, which has been done ironically by an external body, the Northamptonshire County Association of Local Councils. Um, financially, we're in pretty good health with reserves of about, about three hundred and fifty thousand K, which is a figure over there on line seven. Uh, precept is the amount of money that the town council gets from your council tax. Uh, it's increased in line with expectation over the last couple of years of adopting more services from Northampton County Council, uh, but it's going up zero this year. Uh, there's clearly been an impact on the income and the costs from the hub closure and Covid. Um, capital projects, we jump to the next slide as well, including the cycle lane, which hasn't come up very well, and the next slide over the skate park and the next slide over the boardwalk doing this bit in the cold. Um, explain some of the other things, can we jump on again? There we go. In the, uh, large payments amount, um, we've also, of course, bought a new van and make runs to stores for laptops, but also our assets value has risen accordingly. The good news is we've had a clean bill of health from the N-Calc auditor, who said, my quote, "I'm pleased to advise the town council that I do not have any issues or comments to raise and found all satisfactory." I'd like to congratulate Mrs Baker, our clerk, and her team for the excellent way in which the council has been managed during a difficult year. And just a reminder, uh, that I'm, we need to be kept aware of, we as councillors are not paid, we're all as volunteers, an occasional one sees on social media about councillors taking their allowance, et cetera, but in Andal's case, we get no payment, all our time is given for the benefit of Andal. Um, ambitions for the year, um, these were on the agenda as well, and I think they, they seem pretty true of everything we've done for the last couple of years as well. Clearly twenty-one, twenty-two will be a tough year for Andal as Covid retreats or not. Uh, it seems that we have three areas as a council that we can work hard at this year in order to keep things improving. Firstly is environmental. Andal is a great place to live and we want to keep it that way through the work of our planning and estates committees, which councillor, uh, Chappell hopefully maybe, and councillor Davis are in charge of at the moment. We will do everything we can to ensure that you have access to as much open green space as we can to make or keep. Investment in Snipe Meadow and the benches in the cemetery, he'll point to this, uh, all made of heavily recycled plastic, which not only reduces maintenance costs, but keeps plastic out of landfill. Clearly, planning has been a big issue in the last two or three years and no doubt will continue to be so in the future. The baton for the statutory responsibility for this is now passed from East Northants and Northants County to North Northants and will continue to represent the views of the residents of Andal to North Northants as well as we can. Escape Park is a good example of encouraging wellbeing across a whole set of ages and we will keep developing it as funds allow, especially in the surface, and we're paying attention to the basketball courts too. Both of these projects have come about through resident users asking for help, um, and it's a really good example of how we need the residents' help to keep us, uh, involved in things. We're promoting cycling with the new Blackthorn and Creve Road cycleway and working with transition Andal on that. EV usage, hopefully there's some charging points coming on South Road at some point in the future, and of course, walking. Um, and to help with this, we've appointed the footpath warden, Tony Hoyle, um, who was hopefully going to chat on Zoom, but he's not here either. Luckily, I have got a statement from him. Uh, Tony Hoyle is pleased with being appointed as the Andal Parish Path Warden for the ten public rights of way that lie within the parish boundary, is waiting for North Northamptonshire Council to provide the information and guidance applicable to the new scheme. Um, that's the end of his statement. We also know that there are tensions, not negatively, but just naturally, where cyclists, pedestrians and vehicles have conflicting demands, so we're looking to generate a transport, not a traffic, but a transport study during this year. Working with groups like Transition Andal, who are willing and able to support the council, uh, we're ready to, uh, hopefully reduce our carbon footprint. Um, and Flattton Field, I've also got a statement here from Tony in case he couldn't make it. Um, he's asked to, to raise the flag about Flattton Field, uh, campaign to save Flattton Field has been reinvigorated under the banner of Transition Andal and Blooming Andal, which many of you will see the work of in the marketplace. Flattton Field and the recreation ground are any two large green spaces in the town that are freely accessible to the public. And, and the Flattton Field group hopes to convince North Northants that Flattton Field belongs to Andal, it should be a managed green space for the variety of outdoor activities for local people to enjoy and benefit. Should be settled, uh, development. Uh, they have a, a website you can follow stuff on, say flatttonfield.org.uk, and we as a councillor supported the campaign previously and I'm sure we will continue to do so. Snipe Meadow is another one of our green spaces and working with the local wildlife trust, have some ambitious aims down along the riverside, and working with landowners hope to try and improve the, uh, land there. Snipe Meadow is an incredibly rare parcel of land, apparently ninety-eight percent of similar land in the UK has now gone, uh, but recent counts show between thirty and fifty snipe down in the meadows at the moment, which is brilliant. We've got to try and balance the need to open the area up and protect what we have and, and hopefully, uh, the appointment of two Snipe Meadow wardens in the last few months will help with that. And then finally, we jump onto the next slide very quickly, there we go. Hopefully with stuff you may have seen in the advertiser, um, work on the wildflower projects around town, mainly which Blooming Andal are running, will help us improve our verges, et cetera, in the future. Our second big aim must be communication, I think, that's why I joined the council. Our first group we need to communicate with better our residents, um, and my appeal to residents will be to please make active use of our website, please subscribe to our Twitter feeds and our Facebook pages, um, if you have a view about an Instagram page, please let us know. Please read the advertiser, that's the one that's coming out this month. We have monthly pages going to every household in Andal, uh, it's, it's tell you what we've been doing, um, and also please tell us if you want anything else in there. Uh, we have the oracle, which is a sort of an annual or twice a year review. Can we jump to the next slide, please? And we're hopefully going to put up some new signs over the summer, uh, helping people understand which land is ours and which land isn't. A good example of communicating with residents might be the wardens St Peters, which have now got updates on how the work's going on the electronic notice boards and Andal Town Council feeds, and the path from Cricketers Way out to Blackthorn Road. Um, there's a North Northants planning section two, seven, eight or two, three, eight thing there, uh, and it's a really good example of a way which we could encourage communications with residents in town to explain why that's delayed. Secondly, communications with neighbouring parishes in the hinterland of Andal are important, and our newly formed rural forum will help with that, we hope. Uh, we hope to include our neighbours in the transport study. Thanks to David Chappell and Peter Peel for all their work getting that forum off the ground, because Andal is more than just a, a town, it's a service centre as well. And also our communications with North Northants. We're lucky that one of the North Northants ward councillors for Andal, Jason Smithers, is now leader of North Northants, um, and so hopefully Andal's voice will be heard at the top level. Um, how we work with North Northants who hold much of the statutory power of what we do is very important. Um, and lastly, can we jump another one? Um, helping Andal's future after Covid is important. We've worked with the Andal Business Association, hopefully we'll keep the town flourishing economically, they love Andal website, hopefully you've seen and maybe looked at, which I'm going to touch on a bit more at the end, is an excellent example of a local project. If we just jump onto the next one again. Here we have it being made, obviously it's being made locally, but the website that backs it is made locally and the video is made by a, a local student. So, you know, it's, it's helping support the economy locally. We jump on one more. Um, working with North Northants on the same, the Welcome Back Fund, uh, using Fix My Street to get potholes fixed, which seems to be getting done very quickly at the moment. Um, working collaboratively with our NNC councillors to get the best for Andal and the parishes around it. Hopefully kickstarting the market, farmers' markets as things open up, if they do. Finding a way to recognise local heroes like the Hermes delivery agent Cathy Whitten and all the retail staff who kept Andal open in the last few years. Supporting creative Andal, um, offering use of the QVH, the food festival, um, do look at the Creative Andal website, it's, it's just online recently. New functions for the hub space here at Flattton House to support local groups and then the transport survey looking at future issues and solutions. Um, we're hoping to show the video at the end of it, do you want to do questions?
Yeah, councillor.
Is there any questions online, are there?
Oh, of course.
Sorry. If there are any questions from anyone who watches this, please contact, uh, Emma at the council, we can get them answered. Are there any questions from the floor?
Is this supposed to be the questions as, um, agenda?
Yeah, I, I, I changed the agenda, sorry.
Yes, are you on questions now?
Yeah, because then we can finish with the video.
I should read, I should read this if we don't find it.
Please do.
Because of the failure to establish an Andal neighbourhood plan, and the fact that the proposed ENC local plan will not be ratified until the end of the year, if at all, Andal townery has no defence against being overdeveloped. Approximately two hundred dwellings are already earmarked for building with outline planning permission granted at Cottesstock Road and St Christopher's Drive. Another fifty-three houses are in the pipeline at Stoke Doyle Road. These numbers, together with a number of smaller infill developments, are well in excess of the Grooter required, up to and including two thousand and thirty-one. Andal will struggle to assimilate this number as its infrastructure is already point-stretched. Rumour has it, however, that a number of landowners stroke developers are using the lack of any plan to put in planning applications across the town, which could lead to over six hundred plus houses being allowed. This could mean over, you count one and a half cars per house, over nine hundred more cars trying to navigate the town's narrow and already congested streets. Andal Town Council oppose the two sides which now have outlined planning permission, preferring other sites such as Peddyl Road and Hearn Road. It is these alternative sites that are now being promoted. It will be very difficult to oppose them as they were in the proposed neighbourhood plan. Services in Andal are already stretched to the limit. The doctors, surgery and dentists are inadequate, traffic and parking are a nightmare, the schools are already full. We are in danger of spoiling a unique and lovely medieval town by surrounding it with one large housing estate. I'm asking what the town council and the new unitary authority will be doing to prevent this overdevelopment? Also, what plans they have to address the infrastructure issues? Thank you.
Uh, it's a pretty big question.
I know it is.
I think, I think it's one that we've struggled with for the last, certainly since I've been on the council. Um, David, I don't know if you want to say anything or...
Somehow I saw that happening. All right, I'll come up for a minute. I'm very sympathetic, meaning to all the points you've just made, because I've spent a very frustrating time, uh, leading the council's planning committee, uh, and having to grapple with the problems we have with our neighbourhood plan, which ultimately failed at examination, and trying to respond to the, uh, East Northants local plan, which of course has now been submitted for its next formal part, uh, and exercised in total futility, bearing in mind that it promotes three sites in the town, two of which have already got out by planning permission, as you rightly pointed out, the third of which uh, is imminently going to have to be considered. And i- it's undoubtedly the case that the planning permission's already granted, which in fact could come to an even larger number of houses than you've suggested. Um, I think it could be potentially as high as two hundred and sixty dwellings, which of itself would exceed the amount required under the co-spatial strategy. Um, are going to be almost certainly supplemented by the site of Stoke Doyle Road, which as you, um, rightly observe is not only the draft local plan that was actually provided for within our own failed neighbourhood plan. Um, and it's undoubtedly also the case that there are at least two other substantial sites, um, where I suspect planning applications are relatively imminent. And it's terribly difficult to see quite where as a town council we can go with this. Because unfortunately, we didn't have a power veto. It's not our decision as to whether or not planning permission is granted, that's the planning authority. That was ENC, with whose planning department, I have to say, we had a pretty stormy relationship by the time that ENC disappeared into NNC. Um, I'm hoping that we'll develop a much better relationship with NNC over planning matters. But whether or not, frankly, the genie is already out of the bottle, remains to be seen. Um, I think we are going to have to look almost beyond ENC, uh, try to bring in our Member of Parliament, uh, and make clear to him that we are in danger of seeing the jewel in the crown, which I think many of us believe Andal is in terms of this county and certainly the northern part of it, swapped by development. And it worries me that that development will ultimately start to creep towards, if not absorb, some of the neighbouring villages. Uh, that to me is utterly unacceptable. However. Beyond simply responding to consultations, trying to get the voice heard, ultimately we have no power. But we can make our voice pretty loud. I think we did a pretty good job, in fact, in relation to that, when you consider the public response to the ENC local plan part two.
God, it's nowhere.
Well, the interesting thing about it was that they had to restart the local plan part two, partly because of the fuss that we managed to kick up about where it should be done. But also, when they did launch the consultation on it, they found themselves absolutely overwhelmed with the response. Certainly about ninety-five percent of the response to the local plan came from Andal, because it was Andal that was incensed by what was in it. Um, and if ever there was a case of a disconnect between a, a district council and its planning development and the public it serves, it's that local plan part two. It was very, very clear to all of us, one Andal Town Council, that there was no public support for what was being included in Andal Plan Part Two. But all we can do is make representations. And we have submitted, uh, observations, uh, on that plan to the public examination. It's certainly Andal Town Council's point of view that that plan is so flawed that it fails to pass the statutory test. Whether or not the inspector will ultimately agree with this remains to be seen. But the problem is, whatever happens to the local plan part two, we're still stuck with two outlined planning permissions already, and we're in the pipeline. And it fulfills a prophecy that we've sat and talked about in this room almost determinately over perhaps the last five years or more, that if we were unable to put together a neighbourhood plan, we would find ourselves at the mercy of developers. And unfortunately, that's turning out to be the case. It's no consolation, but having a neighbourhood plan hasn't saved other people either. One of the two major planning applications which came forward and which have got out by planning permission was for the development of, uh, Cottesstock Road stroke St Peters Way. That very large site lies partially in the parish of Andal and partially in the parish of Blackthorn. Uh, a rough estimate is that approximately sixty dwellings on that site, where the outlined planning permission is for a hundred and thirty, would actually lie in the parish of Blackthorn. They would of course be entirely detached from the built environments of the village of Blackthorn. And the Blackthorn neighbourhood plan, which has been adopted and is part of the planning process, did not allocate that site for any kind of development. There was sufficient land to be developed in Blackthorn to not have that part of the site devoted at all. And nevertheless, it got its outline planning permission. The rationale was that because that particular site was mentioned as a possible site for future residential development in the old rural north Andal and Fratston plan, that it was not possible to exclude it as a site going forward. that it was not possible to exclude it as a side going forward. I profoundly disagreed with that interpretation of the law and rules at the time, I still do. But the fact of the matter is that using that argument, they rode roughshod over the wishes of Blackthorn, just as they rode roughshod over the wishes of Aundal. That's a very depressing report, but it's the reality. So you ask us what we can do and the answer is, I don't know. But we will do what we can. But in terms of the delivery of infrastructure, we have even less control, I think. I'm not a statutory consultee about whether or not there are new doctors, surgeries, dentists, additional roads, you name it. We were of course lobbying for the infrastructure to support future development. Whether we could be successful with that, I do not know. Though I can assure everybody, it won't be for the lack of trying. And if you want something of a positive, there has been a recent consultation by one of the two developers who've got outline planning permission. They approached Aundal generally and asked for the views of residents in relation to the planning application of Cottystock Road. This council did respond directly to the developers and set out a number of significant concerns, which in our view may be so significant that notwithstanding the grant of an outline planning permission, should mean that any development on that site should either not take place or be much, much more restricted than the current outline planning permission envisages. When in due course, that plan has to be further considered by the planning authority, this council will launch the biggest, I suspect, attack on any planning application that it's ever done. Because we fundamentally disagreed with it when it came forward. And that is still the position as far as I am aware today. So we will do what we can. We will always listen to the public of Aundal. We take on board concerns, we'll do what we can to try and meet them. But sadly, there is no magic wand, there is no silver bullet. And we may be facing a very difficult future.
Thank you very much. Firstly, an apology to those watching wherever. I did say I would repeat the questions that were asked, but I don't think I remembered all of your questions. But we might type it out somewhere. The only thing I would say on top of what David said is there maybe is a new opportunity now with the change to the unitary authority and with our ward councillors having a strong influence. Whether we can make use of that, I don't know. But again, the whole thing is cart launch at the moment, so we're not really sure. But as David said, we will do everything we can. And I know you're a regular attendee at our meetings as well, so, but do keep in touch with us. Any other questions at all? No, there's probably hundreds of, no, there's probably not. But there might be hundreds of people somewhere else. Just before we finish with the video, just a quick summation. It feels like an exciting time for Aundal as the town inevitably grows, as we've just mentioned. We all need to work hard to keep what it is about living here that's important. I would ask everyone to keep being good neighbours, considerate, stenouros users, local customers, sorry, loyal customers of local businesses, regular pothole reporters on Fix My Street etcetera, to keep us as good as things can be. Do keep in contact with us at Aundal Town Council with posts on social media, the electronic notice boards and in print. Come to meetings, look at agendas, keep us honest. And make use of us, your councillors and council staff. We want to help facilitate Aundal being as good a place to live in ten years if we can, as it was ten years ago. And we all need to work hard to make that happen. As a reminder of some of the good things, we can jump onto this video, it's on the website.
Quite possibly the most historic and handsome market town in the UK. You might say I'm a little biased, I've been born and bred here.
And being the fourth generation of my family to run a business here on the High Street.
My name is Philip Hannah and let me show you around our town.
Situated within Northamptonshire's Neen Valley at the heart of England, Aundal is easy to find and get to. Whether you are planning to visit by road or river, you will enjoy surrounding countryside and picturesque villages.
History is in abundance, providing a grand mix of fine old buildings, many from the Georgian period made from the town's signature golden limestone. Northamptonshire is known as the county of spires and squires. And although Aundal made a bit like in Squires these days, we are proud to boast the county's tallest spire at St Peters Church. The town is well known for Aundal School, one of the finest public schools in England. It brings facilities and cultural aspects that much bigger towns would be very amped with.
Charm and history are not the only reasons to visit, as Aundal has a thriving retail pub too. Granted a market charter in the year nine hundred and seventy-two, we know how to put on a market. We'll find a weekly market and also a rustic farmer's market once a month. Those with a keen eye will enjoy visiting the High Street with an array of independent shops, whether you want to look at your best or need a new outfit. Are on the hunt for that perfect gift. Seeking inspiration in the home or the garden. Want to find antiques or brown art galleries. Looking to discover something that you might not find elsewhere. Want food and drink for tourists who really care about quality and problems. Or simply wish to enjoy some good old fashioned customer service. Then Aundal is for you. When the shopping's done or it's time for a reward, you are never far away from a speciality coffee shop or independent pub and restaurant. We are a town that takes enormous pride in showing great hospitality. Of course, there's much more to Aundal than the burning community spirit, the wide range of sports and leisure activities for residents and visitors. And let's not forget the amazing countryside and wildlife that surrounds us. I am proud to be part of this town and to witness how the administrators, businesses and people all work together. It makes for a place of unique character on which I hope that you will come and enjoy and be able to experience it. We hope to see you soon in Aundal, a great place to visit, to live and do business.
An important reminder of what's important about the town, which we just touched on with the planning question as well. I thought we'd be wrapped up in about half an hour, we've taken a bit longer than that, but that's great. Thank you so much to those who've come on down and seen us in person. And apologies to those who are watching at home, can't watch at home, but there we go. Hopefully we'll do a bigger meeting at some point when we're able to in the future. That's it, I think. Thank you very much indeed.
Good evening, I'm Rupert Reichhold. My family and I live in Aundal. We relocated to Aundal in nineteen ninety-eight after I had retired from the civil service, in which I had served for forty years, mainly at the Department for Transport. In nineteen ninety-nine, I was first elected as one of the East Northamptonshire District Councilors for Aundal and served as such until ENC and NCC expired in April this year. Concurrently, between two thousand and one and two thousand and thirteen, I served as Northamptonshire County Councilor for Aundal. My assignments included a fostering panel, the corporate parenting board and personnel committee. There were also many Aundal constituency concerns for me to follow up. As a freshly elected Aundal Town Councillor, I look forward to working with my councillor colleagues and our officers in looking after Aundal interests. In particular, I will be serving on the Aundal Town Council Finance Committee, the Personnel Committee and as Aundal Town Council's representative as volunteer action.